Good evening to the Cumberland School Committee meeting of March 9. First item would be the call to order at 7 o'clock. The next item is this pledge of allegiance. First item is the approval of the agenda. By Mrs. Rogalski, second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passes six to zero. And for the record, we'll note that Mrs. Friedman is absent tonight. Next item is the consent agenda. We have several meeting minutes. I'm going to let our clerk, Ms. Smith, explain what's happening with the meeting minutes.
Thank you. Just as an update, there was a procedural change that needed to occur from the last meeting to this, so there are some meeting minutes that are back on here again for vote. That would be the approval of the minutes of the Cumberland Town Council School Committee joint meeting from January 25th, special meeting from February 7th, and then down below on the B, the executive session from January 26th. These are all being reapproved tonight. And in addition to that, we have the executive session of February 16th, in which those meeting minutes will be tabled until the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. In addition to the one she's mentioned, we also have the regular meeting minutes from February 16th. Those are in the drive, I believe. We also have the enrollment report of March 1st, 2023, the school police report of February 1st, the school bus inspection reports from March 1st, and the residency and truancy report from March 1st, all of 2023, of course. Pleasure of the committee.
Your motion will approve.
By Mr. Collins. By Mrs. Feather, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes six to zero. Next item is the personal announcements. Dr. Thornton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we have several items for you. First, we have an appointment rehire, 2/27/2023, Brianna Ager, a paraprofessional at ICAN Garvin. We have an appointment, 2/27/2023, Maria Gribach, paraprofessional, Success BF Norton. We have an appointment, 2/27/2023, Wesley Salvis, paraprofessional, ALP at the high school. We have an appointment, 3/10/2023, to the end of the school year, Kalina Norburg, special educator, Cumberland Hill. We have unpaid personal leave of absence, 4/18/2023, to the end of the school year, Margarita Travers, paraprofessional, one-on-one CHS. We have unpaid personal leave of absence, 2023-24 school year, Lynn Mann, paraprofessional, Cumberland Hill. We have unpaid personal leave of absence, 2023-24 school year, Linda Rosasco, special educator, IAIM, Cumberland Hill. And we have four retirements. Retiring after 28 years of service on June 30 of this year, Michael Butler at the high school in social studies. Retiring after 32 years of service on 6/30/2023, John Broder, PE at NCNS Ann McCourt. Retirement after 15 years of service on 6/30, Jennifer Hunt, paraprofessional at community. And lastly, retiring after 26 years of service on 1/5/2024, Cynthia Ferreira, accounts payable at the business office. And that is all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Next out is the report out of executive session meeting, report out meeting minutes from, I mean, sorry, report out of executive session meeting on March 9th. Report out of executive session votes, there were no votes taken. I need a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. Motion by Mr. Collins. Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes six to zero. Next up is the superintendent's report.
Okay, our first topic, enrollment, enrollment, enrollment. We keep going up, and it's picking up pace, I would say. Right now, as of this week, we actually eclipsed the 5,000 student mark, first time since, I believe, 2008, when we had 5,060 students. I actually went back some time, did some research, et cetera, on your, at your places, is one sheet of paper. Went back, enrollment has fluctuated over time in the 1990s, 1980s, in the 4,000 range, 5,000 range. The high watermark seems to have been 1973, 50 years ago, 7,300 students in Cumberland. So since then, it has fluctuated. The good news with enrollment is state aid is tied to enrollment. So as most towns are losing enrollment in Rhode Island, we are gaining, along with, I think, North Smithfield, Smithfield. So as far as state aid, and we'll talk about later with the budget, it's great news for Cumberland, so we're seeing more state aid this year, and expect that trend to continue. I would point out here, this is the NESDEC projection we had done recently. You can see on the far right. We're already at the 2024 level in March of '23. So just this last two weeks, we gained 14 more students. And I'm having my enrollment folks kind of ask where they're coming from, what's happening. They're coming from Florida, Massachusetts, Bolivia, Italy. So it's really a diverse situation, but they keep coming. So I think it's good as far as state aid, but it also, you know, has some, I think, concerns as far as construction and our ability to have all of our students. Ironically, this week at the state level, Rachel Sandow went to a meeting, and Ryan was talking about enrollment in the context of their report. And they first did a slide on enrollment across Rhode Island, all kids, all districts. You can see we're losing kids across the state, right? Not, not new news for you, but then they have the Cumberland slide, and that's us. And that's already old news. That's that 4784, I think it says there, right? So that's already old news. We're at 5,000 and counting. So yeah, it keeps happening. Why? I don't think there's one single reason. You could say it's housing affordability, you could say good schools, you could say rental property availability on the border of Massachusetts, right? So I don't have one reason for it, but it is a good, a good situation that's, that's happening right now in town. Back in the day, that's 1973, you can see pre-computer, right? That's the old-school way of doing that. I had that, you know, copied for you, you can see that, just the 7367 we had on the books back then. The high school at one point had 1,800 students in it. Right now, we're in the 15s, give you a sense. ALIS training, as recall, stands for alert, lockdown, inform, counter evacuate. That's the training we do for school safety, all of our faculties.
Excuse me, Dr. Thornton. Mr. Collins has a question about the enrollment.
I just don't want to have to go back and ask about enrollment. I do, just one question, perhaps either you or Mr. Demana can answer this. So we're seeing an uptick in students from Bolivia and Italy.
Well, it's just the one in the last two weeks. We have the one Italian student in the last two weeks.
And how many from Bolivia?
Just the one.
So one from each country? Any other countries, non-English speaking?
I would say this, our MLL population has grown tremendously. I think I gave you some info on that maybe two or three months ago. We now are, we're high incidence, we're over 100. We keep adding staff in all of our buildings for MLL. The challenge is, and I was with Mr. Demana this week at BF Norton Elementary, some of the students come in and they don't have a dominant language. Mr. Demana was talking to one student, he's actually fluent in Italian, Mr. Demana, and he was talking to a student who was, had Italian and Portuguese, had both, nothing dominant. So we're getting kids who need support, so we're hiring more staff. But Tony, if you'd recall the current number of MLL? Yeah?
Because we talked about this at the BF Norton Achievement Meeting, as part of a bigger discussion about MLL, and my question was, are we able to meet this need? And with this enrollment, how do we project budget-wise for next year? I mean, we already have preliminary budgets, but if these numbers keep going up...
Right. If the numbers keep going up, as we were walking down here from our last session, I got an email from Ashton, there's concern that maybe they have, could be 27 in a room in two sections of grade five, and maybe we should look at a third section of Ashton. And I would do those kinds of items more like end of the year, towards the summer, if those numbers actually materialize, and we have them on the books, we'd do that. But right now, I gave you a budget tonight of actual, what we have in terms of the system right now, rolling up all the grades. But yeah, MLL and just general population, it's a good thing, like I said, in terms of state aid, but it's a challenge as far as capacity, right? Middles have space, we have space in the middles, we have space at the high school with really the elementaries. Some grade levels are getting full in some buildings, and some have more, more space.
I'd just like to add that one of the challenges with folks coming from other countries is that sometimes the parents themselves don't have any English language knowledge, which creates more challenges for the staff. But, you know, the positive, of course, is it's very enriching for the community. So we look forward to, you know, what steps we can take with the MLL population.
Sure. So back to ALIS, we're training all of our faculties. I actually sat in on the second day of training at North Cumberland Middle School on Wednesday. Every school's going through first a two-hour lecture followed by scenarios, hands-on scenarios. We do situational plans with the teachers, and we still have to do BF Norton and the high school. But towards the year end, we'll then formulate our idea how we're going to talk to parents about this, and then next year, talking to the students, especially at the high school and middle levels. How do we, how do we do that? So that's, that's coming up. We have a flu clinic coming up again. You can see we had our old clinics, October 11th, 24th, and 16th, and we have some more clinics. Mike, is that a hyperlink we can hit? Thank you. And I believe we have an advertisement for some more clinics, but I don't know if we'll get that on mic. Oh. Okay. Apologies for that. I think we, oh, I'm sorry. So this is just the clinics that were, historical sheet of clinics held, I'm sorry, apologies. Just shows you how many, by town, right? How many, you see down there, we have 546 students vaccinated and 698 adults in total. That's all that is, historical information on the clinic, not the actual clinics coming up, apologies. Thanks, Mike. Moving on. My recurring topic, school construction. Now, that's kind of blurry, Mike. It's my, my bad cellphone. So that, this is the addition at Garvin. As you recall, Garvin's getting an addition, the steel is up, and that's an exciting event, because that was delayed, so that came in. And you can see that they're working on, on the structure at Garvin. Garvin is, as you know, a reno inside, so now the rough wiring's done, and rough plumbing is done, sheetrock is not going in, the ceiling is being, being put in. This, if you believe it, was the old Garvin cafeteria. If you know Garvin, what it was, it was a small little space in Garvin, right? It's now classroom space, it's all framed, plumbed, wired. So now we have sheetrock once they get the inspections done. So that's an exciting change. I'd be happy to walk you around in another maybe month, when you just kind of see walls in, and see what it looks like. But that's an exciting change. Lot of sheetrock going up, that's a wall bump out. In the old Garvin, you'd have things behind there that you don't want to have exposed anymore, so the remedy is a bump out of sheetrock to kind of tuck in all those things you don't want to have in a classroom. Once again, another example of, is open space, that was a wall, now it's an open space. And we have what they call borrowed light. Borrowed light means you cut a hole in a wall. So it's called borrowed light, but a lot of open space, a lot of open feel in Garvin as you walk around. This is the Ashton addition. It's up, it's buttoned up, windows in, tight. This is inside, what it looks like going in the main hall right now. Once again, this one is on budget and actually ahead of schedule, I think. Exciting. This is what it looks like right now. This is today, on the right, the north side, if you can tell, but the roof is on, on the north side. They finished the roof today on that side. There it is, there's the roof today. This is community school. That is the cafeteria, the new caf slash the classroom space, once again, buttoned up. Inside, they're doing rough plumbing, electrical, that kind of thing. Another look on the outside, then I went in, and that's the caf, what it looks like right now. That's looking towards the classroom space, the DaVinci Room area. And another view of the caf. So it's a large cafeteria. Right now, they'll probably still stay to their sixth lunch schedule until we move kids out of community, just because of the sheer size of, of their population, just so you know. So those are my slides, I believe. Any questions on construction that you may have, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. One of the questions that has been raised in the community is to understand what the traffic patterns are going to look like, and I think the biggest concern of that is Garvin. It has been an issue with North Garden Street in the past, and it does interfere with the neighborhood. So if there's anything that you have an update or any plans on how that could work, we would like to hear about it.
I can come next time with a schematic from the architect of what the traffic flow's going to be at Garvin. And I'll bring that next meeting.
Great, thank you so much.
I mean, the basic idea for Garvin is to move as many cars off of the road and onto the campus as possible. So, I mean, quite honestly, we've been having that discussion for years, so. And, I mean, quite honestly, the people in North Garden have really had a hard time, as well as some of the other areas around other schools. Thank you, Dr. Thornton.
Thank you.
Next up is the reports of standing committing committees. First is the fiscal management subcommittee update. I'm sorry, did somebody have a question? Oh. Mr. Collins.
Good evening, everybody. The fiscal management subcommittee met this evening. We have four resolutions for the committee's approval, all of which passed fiscal subcommittee three to zero. And we also have payment in the bills in the amount of $1,774,226.46, which also passed, and we should look forward to hopefully passing those later on. And the other thing was the, which the superintendent will be presenting to the full committee, he gave us a brief update or summary of his budget proposal for this year, which I know we're going to, is on the agenda for us momentarily. So that's it. Everybody was in attendance, everybody's in good health, and that's it. On to the next committee.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Policy and procedures up committee, subcommittee update is that we did not have one. We will have one probably in two weeks, where we will have several policies that we need to address. Did achievement, achievement has not met, have they? You'll take it?
Achievement has not met since our last meeting, but we've scheduled the meeting for March 20th. The Cumberland High School will, Cumberland High School will be in as part of a two-meeting to discuss their initiatives and what they're working on. So that will be, I think, Monday, the 20th, I think, is what we agreed upon. So that's it. We'll have, hopefully, something to report out at our next meeting.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Collins, for pulling double duty. District Health and Wellness Subcommittee update, Mrs. Rogalski.
Well, at first, I promised a shorter review than last time, but after I started typing everything out, we have quite a few updates again. We met at the end of January, we had a really good meeting. The first item was that every three years, we are required to do a menu audit with Sedexo. So we actually got to taste breakfast. Shawna Trudell from Sedexo, who is our director of food services, was there and brought several different items for members of the committee to try. We found out some interesting things. For example, did you know that in the cafeterias, they offer name-brand items such as Fruit Loops, Cocoa Puffs, Apple Jacks, Trix, Pop Tarts, but they're not the same that you buy in the store. They are actually unavailable for purchase, they're made specifically for schools, they contain different amounts of whole grains, different amounts of sugar, basically to make it much healthier, be healthier, because we've all been somewhere, we've picked up the mystery muffin, and we don't know what we're actually eating. And kids are very hesitant to do that, and so a lot of kids, when they don't know what they're eating, won't choose food. But when they see that, they have that brand recognition, they choose the items, but they're actually getting a much healthier meal than what they could find at the store. So we thought that was kind of interesting. All of the meals are unitized, there are requirements from the state that there are two fruits, there's a certain number of whole grains, there's a certain number of reduced sugars, et cetera. Every meal is itemized, so when a student takes a meal, they take the entire meal. It's, they don't get to pick and choose, everything is all-in-one. Along with that, though, we have actually implemented share tables and baskets, and I don't know how many of you are aware of that, in each of our schools, so that for parts of the meal that go uneaten, students can actually put them in those share baskets or share tables, and they get redistributed to students who may be in need. They also go to the nurse's office, in case you have a student who maybe has low blood sugar and needs a snack or something along those lines. So that's really good. We're having a lot less food waste as well. There are going to be more changes coming in the 24-25 school year, they're cutting back sugars, looking to increase whole grains, the standards are being evaluated now, and we'll know the results of that probably within the next year or so. And then the last thing that we did with that was we actually discussed that Pawtucket has created a picture menu for their students. Instead of students having to read a menu, we have several, I mean, you just heard, we have 250 MLL students. We have kindergartners who can't read, we have first graders who can't read, we have perhaps some of our special needs students that can't read. And what they've done is they've actually created a picture menu with pictures of the items that they've taken, and they post it on a smart board, and the kids, instead of reading, can go and just point to what they want to eat. So they're thinking that that is going to have a lot of success in helping children choose better and actually eat what they get versus guessing on what they want, and then maybe not eating the whole meal. So we're actually looking to implement that in our school as well, and we're going to kind of explore that. After Mrs. Trudell was done, we heard from Donna Marshakowski, who is the director of nurses for the district, and she talked about Project Adam with us. As we all know, we were all exposed to Damar Hamlin with his cardiac emergency on the football field, and from that, we've already had cardiac awareness, but this goes a step beyond that. This is designed specifically for high schools, it's a no-cost project. And what they do is they connect the high schools with medical professionals to set up, create, set up and implement protocols for cardiac events, not only for the teachers though, but to teach the students. You drill what would happen, and the idea is that normally, teachers and coach, or sorry, coaches and medical professionals in those buildings are the only one that have CPR and AED training, and the idea is to get students involved in that as well. We are currently required to, all students, nine to 12, have CPR training. This takes it a step beyond. And the idea is that not only maybe will students be able to help, but if they're physically unable to help, they could tell an adult, this is what I learned, this is how you do it, this is how you do chest compressions. So whether it's another student that needs help, or an adult at a game in the building, it would be able to help them. So we're kind of excited about getting that hooked up, and we're going to look into that at the high school. Vaping education, I spoke last time about how I reached out to Scott Carpenter and Justin Kuntz from the high school. They actually went ahead and set up sheets for the middle and elementary schools to get education for staff, administrators, and teachers about vaping. They're going to be going into the faculty building, and on the day that they put out the sheet, they already had four schools signed up. So they're going to be going into faculty meetings at all of the schools. And the last thing is something we're actually excited about, even though we have no personal control over, and those were the updates from the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition. There is currently a bill on the floor in the Rhode Island House right now to make school meals free for everyone, to have it come out of the governor's budget. There are half the states in the country are pursuing the same type of bill, several already have it. With the income requirements being so low, many families actually can't qualify that are in need. You take a single family, or a single-parent family with one child working a full-time job, they actually don't qualify for assistance. That combined with SNAP benefits ending, we have a lot of food insecurity right now, it's very high. And we saw during COVID how much those free meals really assisted our students and benefited them. So it's gained a ton of traction, they have student, they have support from teachers unions, principals unions, the Rhode Island Family Services across the state. They have, I think, 48 or 50 different groups signed on right now at the moment, so we're hopeful that that will kind of gain some traction, and we'll see how that does in the House. They are looking for public support. I can maybe see about putting a link to get the public support on the health and wellness page on the website. People can write to their legislators and voice their support for that bill. And our next meeting is in March, and we're going to be going over the lunch menu at that point, along with a few other things.
Anyone have any questions?
I do have one silly question. On the, the photo menu that you mentioned, will the names of the items also be on the menu? So that...
Yeah, and then we would have to do translation services as well for people who could read. But yeah, the, the names would be there, but then the idea is also that it's a picture of the actual food. It's not pulled off the internet. We would go in and take photos with Sedexo, and the kids could see what it will look like when they get that meal.
Thank you. Next is the public hearing, the reading of the amended policy, G6 personnel benefit policy for non-unit administrative and support personnel. Dr. Thornton, are we having this read into the record?
Yes, please.
I would ask that it's read into the record, then. And next up is the public comment regarding the G6 personnel benefit policy for non-unit administrative and support personnel. Would anyone like to make a public comment? Seeing no one. Next item is, is general comments from the public. Would anyone from the public like to make a comment on any issue? Seeing no one. Next is new business. Item A, submission of the fiscal year 24 superintendent's proposed school budget. Dr. Thornton.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. I know you all have an electronic copy of the budget, as well as a paper copy I just gave you this evening. Just a few thoughts tonight, I know we're just giving you two this evening. In our next item, we're going to talk about scheduling some potential budget workshops. So just some thoughts in terms of what you have received. To me, we really have had three big stories in Cumberland, one being enrollment. Enrollment is on the upswing. We talked about, you know, this past year, our math scores are seeing, you know, 20, 19, 18-point gains in different, different schools. It's certainly good news. We're staffing this year's budget to keep that momentum going forward. In the budget, we talk about how some of the ESAR funds are going away at ESAR II. As you may recall, we had 10 jobs in ESAR II. We're looking to model bringing six of those jobs forward into ESAR III, six essentials jobs. We are modeling bringing three jobs back from the ESAR budget to the operating budget, one being the second dean of the high school from ESAR to operating, one being the guidance counselor that made us to have 2.0 counselors at both middle schools from ESAR to operating, and the third position is the in-school suspension position at the high school. That was grant-funded now, that's also modeled in the operating budget. So that's, you know, part of this conversation. The second big item is, I mentioned already, enrollment. Enrollment is helping our, our funding. Last summer, when we looked at our budget, we were speculating maybe $400,000 in state aid. Right now, we're looking at $1,009,000, give or take. So it really helps a great deal covering all of our, our shortfalls. So that's great news. And when you look at that, they look at what's called resident APG membership, RADM. It's how many kids are in school on average, right? But I can tell you right now, a year ago this date, we have 90 more kids right now in districts. So RADM, maybe that's 70, but that's good news again, next time we have this conversation around budget. So that's a great, great change for Cumberland. The third big piece, I think to me, is construction, because, you know, with all the construction, I think it makes Cumberland more attractive. It also gives students a space that they can, you know, thrive in, so that's exciting. In this budget, we have a couple staffing changes, but not, not many modeled for you. I mentioned pulling in those three jobs into the operating budget, the dean, the ISS, and the guidance. We also are modeling not filling a few open jobs right now. Our current dean, Mr. Kuntz, had a science position that was not filled. We're modeling not filling that position right now, we don't think we need that in the schedule. Also modeling one less PE teacher at the high school, given the scheduling that we can do. And once again, given a retirement at another level, that would not be an impact on, on any of our employees, but that's one we're modeling not filling. And thirdly, we're looking to not fill an open job right now. It's a reading interventionist, half Ashton, half Garvin, currently open. Based on the winter benchmarks, we don't think we need that job to fulfill the mission. So in the end, after all that, we're modeling on minus one for staffing. And that's great news, because last summer, we're modeling reducing by 14 because of the state implications, now it's a minus one. So that's, that's great news, we think, for, for Cumberland. Also in the budget, we're modeling an ask from the town of 2%, around $941,000. That's our current ask that I'm modeling for you to consider. We're also modeling using $700,000 of fund balance. Once again, we're not off that yet, we're trying to reduce our dependence on that, but it's still something we have to look at. We're also modeling using $200,000 of ESAR II to zero that out and put that towards Chromebooks, some technology in the budget. And lastly, Mr. Pignano, before he does leave, we know he has $97,000 more of old master lease money, we're going to zero that out in your budget consideration, so that's also part of this. I should also add, we're also modeling realistic increases in budget drivers. For example, electricity, we're increasing that by 33% because it's been going up quite a bit, so that's our number right now. We're modeling a big jump, if you want to lower it, please do, but that's what we have right now. We're modeling special ed up 8%. We're modeling healthcare up 3%, although right now, we're only at 95% of our, our rate, so it could be coming in only at 1%. We're actually doing well, but 3 is a good number, we put it in. We're also thinking we can absorb the 7% increase in the bus contract. We took some busing back from statewide, from Mount St. Charles. We took some busing back from statewide, from Mount St. Charles, so we think we can absorb that increase without having any hit in the budget. Lastly, for your consideration, three things in here to highlight. We're modeling staffing home games for contact sports with a trainer for concussion issues. That's 19-8 in the budget. We're modeling cybersecurity at 40K, to continue the work we're making on cybersecurity. And we're modeling Chromebook replacement, not a Master Lease this time, just in our budget, 250K. So those are three lead items. So in the end, the budget would be 78, 871, 865, or a 2.8% increase. It's around $2,175 increase is what you're getting to consider. So that's the budget. I would say in terms of Cumberland budgets over the years, this is one of the better budgets I've had the pleasure to work on with the team because of the state aid increase. So happy to answer any questions now if you have on the floor, or I know our next item, we're looking at workshop dates.
Assuming Mr. Collins has a question.
Yeah, Dr. Thornton, I wish I had asked this during budget, I mean, during fiscal. Is your budget inclusive of Mr. Demana's ask for a community facilitator?
Say more about that?
The position we discussed, the community facilitator to service the MLL population?
That job currently, I believe, is not in right now, not in at the moment. Mr. Demana, is that correct? Not in? Not in at the moment? But you certainly could do that.
Yeah, that's something we talked about considering, and, you know, I know this is a fluid process, so I figured I'd ask now instead of June 29th. So thank you.
Mrs. Rogowski? Oh, you were just agreeing, okay. Anyone else have any questions? I do have one question. Do we have any kind of an increase in mental health supports in the district?
Right now, I mentioned the guidance piece that is holding serve. No increases right now, other than what I just mentioned, the guidance.
Thank you. Next item is the scheduling of the school budget workshops. Have we any dates on those yet?
The chair was working with us on potential, potentially looking at March 16, where Mr. Pignano would do his last, for the last time, Budget 101 per the chair's request, and then have a workshop at that point, and then potentially the regular meeting, March 23, a budget workshop inside the regular meeting. And if you need more dates, then we could do that. It is submitted to the town early April, so you have time to schedule a third if you wanted to.
Thank you very much. And as always, if you have any questions regarding the budget, Mr. Pignano is all, Dr. Thornton is always available to sit down with you. Next item is discussion and/or vote to approve overnight student field trip, CHS Coral 2023 Coral Festival competition in Hershey Park, Pennsylvania. Dr. Thornton?
And we have a guest tonight. Amanda Santos is here?
Nope.
Is she here in the back?
Nope.
I thought I saw her earlier. Okay. Do you want to table that? Questions? What are your thoughts?
I'm okay with it. If, do you have?
I know we asked earlier, are any, the question you would always ask would be, are any funds, are any students spending any funds on the trip? The answer is no. It is completely funded by, by their group.
Yes, Mrs. Santos has done a really wonderful job adhering to our policy on field trips as well as state law. Ms. Smith?
I just had one question on that, because I did read the documents that were in the file, and there's $11,000 raised at $600 per student, I believe. Do we know where we stand or where they stand right now in meeting that amount? My understanding from reading the proposal is that if they don't get the fundraising, they don't have the numbers for the fundraising, that this would, the money would be then put into next year, and this would be canceled. So I'd hate to see that happen, but do we know where that stands?
I don't. I can check, and we can certainly email you in the morning if you want to get that information, but I don't have that right now.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion of anything, really.
When is the trip?
I'm not sure when.
When, June 9th? All right, yeah. So I would motion it to table.
Motion? Okay.
Well, we can.
Pleasure of the committee.
Since it is being fully funded, they're looking at it, they have contingencies planned into place, I would make motion to pass and approve.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve by Ms. Smith, second by Mrs. Rogowski. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six to zero. Next item is discussion and/or vote to approve the 2023-2024 school calendar, my favorite item. I look forward to this all year.
So, Mr. Chair, is that time? I will take you through, we have option A or option B. Keep it simple. Both options start after Labor Day, as you can see in the calendars. Both options, the regular Thanksgiving, Thursday, Friday, '23-'24. Both options have December, Christmas being the Monday, 25th. That whole week is out, and that's the same. The calendars differ on February vacation. One calendar, Calendar A, has the week off. The other calendar has us in school for part of that week. I would also mention, I had a meeting of superintendents Tuesday morning. There is still talk of a presidential primary on April 23rd, and I would probably bank on that happening. So we're looking at making our PD day the 23rd, whatever you pick for calendar, bank on that day being the PD day, not the March 28th, one of your choices, or even the February 20th, in one of your calendar choices. So to make it simple, one calendar, Calendar A, you're out all of February week, that week. Calendar B, you're in school for most of that week. That's the big difference. Calendar A, your last day of school with no snow is the 17th of June, and the other calendar, you get out like on the 10th or 11th. It's really, it's really your tolerance for February vacation and June. There's no wrong answer here, it's just how you feel.
Pleasure of the committee.
I should mention, the CTA did do a survey, and I believe three-quarters of them wanted the February vacation.
The only thing I would say about February vacation is that this year, we happen to have an outbreak of a stomach bug right before the break. So I think the break actually helped us in some ways. So, but it is up to the committee to, someone to make a motion? Anyone? Make a motion?
I was making sure my mic was on. Well, I have to turn my mic on so everybody can hear. I will make a motion to approve option A with February vacation. My feelings on the matter are well-known, so I'll be consistent in motion to approve option A with February vacation.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve option A with the February vacation. Second for discussion by Mrs. Feather.
I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay. Rogowski?
I would just, I know it is just three days of school. However, looking at the calendar, it is almost a full week difference at the end of the year. Not only would we get out on Monday, the 17th, right now, if we had February break, but that Wednesday, the 19th, is a federal holiday, Juneteenth. If we have two snow days, such as we're at this year, we're looking at June 20th being the last day of school instead of June 13th. That is a full week's difference for three days of vacation. It's a full week of construction time for schools to get in. It is a full week of vacation for our students. It is a full week of our teachers having to teach extra or be done. I just, I would really strongly urge people to consider option B. It's, yeah.
Can I add something? Sure. If I don't mind, I mean, I'm not disagreeing. Mrs. Rogowski obviously knows what she's talking about. But I, again, I do go back to, I mentioned this at the last meeting. There's usually, it was pretty close, you know, 55-45 split. I mean, the teachers, 73%, 74%, I think was the number, have overwhelmingly asked for February vacation. I think oftentimes, they're at the mercy of the committee administration. I think this is one of those things where we have to listen to the teachers. I think we should listen to teachers always, but I think in this situation right here, I think their voice has to be heard. They're clamoring for it. It's something necessary, whether people agree with that or not. When three-quarters of the people are asking for something, you can't ignore them. That's where I'm coming from. So again, I said this before, I strongly support option A, and that's the motion that's on the table right now.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I understand and I fully support what the teachers are saying and understanding why they want the full week, and it does make a lot of sense, especially when you have children, you work in other towns. It is, it's very beneficial. However, Mrs. Rogowski's point is something that we really need to consider. This is a, this is something that we're looking at on a temporary interim time to shorten that week, which would really have a good impact with getting ready for the construction, the next movement. We're talking about maybe perhaps doing this for a year. We're already starting school after Labor Day, which we have never done in the past, but we have started doing that because of the construction, needing all of the time that we need to get everything prepped over the summertime. We're going to be cutting off another week on that time if we extend the school year. And my concern is, I would rather take the chance of getting that construction going, making sure there would be no delays, and making sure that for the following school year, we can operate sufficiently, perhaps open again before that Labor Day, and then go back to our full vacation in February. Personally, I think that we're looking at just maybe a year's worth of time during all of the construction and all the movement that we're having happen. And I would just ask that that be considered.
You guys missed all the fun of the February vacation wars a few years back.
We haven't made a decision.
No, we haven't. We, Mr. Collins made a motion to, to, no, I'm sorry, to approve A, yes. And Mrs. Feather made a second. All in favor of option A? Aye. Chair votes aye, so that is, I'm sorry, can we have a roll call vote, please? Just, I'm sorry. Is anyone voting against? You're going to vote, okay. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And all opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so that's four to two. It passes. Option A with February vacation will be the, what we will do. Thank you. Next item is discussion and/or vote to approve the amended policy G6 personnel benefit policy for non-unit administrative and support personnel. Dr. Thornton, I'm going to give this to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know, as we discussed previously, looking for some amendments to the policy first on page one in terms of the naming of some of the positions as indicated on your, on your handout. Secondly, we're looking to make the vacation time more even across the board amongst the different folks in G6. Next change we saw was in terms of life insurance on page five, giving more, more folks the life insurance that the other members had, the $200,000 number. And really, the biggest piece you need to consider is page nine. That's the page that has the ranges, and as you know, based on policy, as superintendent, I can hire folks inside the ranges, but the ranges are yours, and how you decide how you want to do that. So I have some modifications in, I believe, four of the positions. And so that's really where we're at, is looking for your vote for the amendment of G6.
Any questions for Dr. Thornton regarding G6? Any concern? I'm sorry?
I would, I would just actually say one thing. I am not settled on the life insurance issue. I would amend, I would make a motion to amend, to remove any of the new language until we have a chance to actually vet that through policy, and I'd also like to see a fiscal impact. That's been an issue for many, many years.
So, Mr. Groves, some motion to amend less the...
Yeah. Exactly.
Yeah. So that would be my motion from the chair. Sure. Why don't you second?
I'll second the discussion. How soon can we get that done? I think with the financial impact, we can talk about a fiscal in two weeks, and policy, I just don't like leaving anything hanging. Could we get, how soon can we get that on policy?
Probably in two weeks.
Just to get the whole thing over with?
Yeah, and quite honestly, the life insurance would just be more of a retroactive, if the contracts fall in line with G6 anyway.
All these are contingent on July 1 contracts? So it's nothing that's, you know, happening tomorrow?
Yeah, I just, I kind of want everything finalized as we go into, you know, if we lose people and people are vetting Cumberland as a place they may want to work, I think this is a, I think it's a good policy. The things that we offer outside of salary are very important. Was that nameless?
Anyway. So hopefully, yeah, we can just get, oh, I'm sorry.
Hopefully, we can get that done as soon. I know fiscal will take a little bit of the financial impact once Alex is back, so thank you.
All right, so the motion is to approve G6, no, I'm sorry, we have to vote on the amendment first. So the motion is to amend removing the section on the life insurance aspect. We have a first, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any nay votes? That'll pass six to zero. Next is the motion to approve the amended G6 personnel policy.
Make that motion.
By Mr. Collins.
Second.
By Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes six to zero. All right, next is discussion, oh, here we go, discussion and/or vote to approve amended resolution. Mr. Collins?
Hey, good evening, again. We have SCPR-02-. That actually is a mistake, that should be 2023. Just a minute. So I'm going to make an amendment, I'm going to motion, I'd ask for an emotion. I just picked up on it right now. Let me just pull up. I apologize to the dead airspace. No, I just have to check the resolution to make sure, because the agenda does not match. I thought everything was good, and we missed it in fiscal.
You keeping square at home, the amendment of line item 30-23.
It is correct on the resolution.
Yeah, so there's...
All right, so that's not a big deal.
So I can just verbally do it. So I would like to make a motion. No, I would like to introduce resolution SCPR-02-2023-18A Construction Testing Services Payment. This passed Fiscal Management Subcommittee three to zero, and I would move passage to the full committee.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-02-2023-18A Construction Testing Service Payment.
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes six to zero. Next up is discussion and/or vote to approve resolutions. Mr. Collins?
Hello. We have three more resolutions, and I've been asked to do them in order by Ms. Feather. So first, we have SCPR-03-2023-22, Garvin Elementary School Renovations Project Payment Number Five to H.B. Collins. This passed Fiscal Management Subcommittee three to zero, and I would move passage to the full committee.
That's the new thing tonight?
All right, then. Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passes six to zero.
Next, we have SCPR-03-2023-23, Ashton Elementary School Renovations Project Payment Number Six to Albor Construction. This passed Fiscal Management Subcommittee three to zero, and I have moved passage to the full committee.
Mr. Collins? Mr. Collins moves passage on SCPR-03-2023-23. Second by anyone? Oh, Mrs. Vogel. Vogel. All right, so, let's see. Have to learn new abbreviations. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes six to zero.
And finally, we have SCPR-03-2023-24, Community Elementary School Renovations Project Payment Number Six to Albor Construction. This passed Fiscal Management Subcommittee three to zero, and I would move passage to the full committee.
Mr. Collins moves passage of SCPR-03-2023-24. Do I have a second? By Mrs. Vogel. By Mrs. Vogel. Good for you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes six to zero. Mr. Collins, why don't you take the last item?
And finally, we have payment of the bills in the amount of one-million-seven-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars and forty-six cents. Payment of the bills passed Fiscal Management Subcommittee, three to zero, and I would move passage to the full committee.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve the payment of bills in the amount that he mentioned. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.